All right, I want to thank everybody for coming. Public Safety Meeting is Monday, June 16, 2025 at 4:30 PM. This is concerning with my colleague Maria Perez regarding the revised ordinance, amending by adding a new article and regarding cannabis and synthetically denied cannabion.
Cannabinoids.
Cannabinoids products. Thank you, Commissioner. So I'm going to pass it off to, well, before we do that, we're going to go around to, if you could just introduce yourselves, I'll start to my right, go around the room, and then those that are online. Counselor.
Maria Perez, City Council, Ward One. Helen Colton, am I next?
Yes.
Helen Colton Harris, Commissioner, Division of Health and Human Services.
Steve Bonacanti, Law Department.
Ken Shea, Law Department.
Thank you.
And Counselor Victor Dogg.
Thank you, Counselor.
Joseph Dunn, Captain of Springfield FIU.
Lieutenant Jamie Bruno from the Firearms Unit as well.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
And Swahili, our state community police liaison.
Thank you, Swahili. Thank you, Attorney Shea. I think that's all. So I'll pass it off to my colleague, my City Counselor Maria Perez.
So the purpose of the meeting today is to discuss a very important issue that is important in the community. At this point, when it comes to the prohibit of the manufacture sale in this position of synthetic derived cannabinoid, cannabinoid and specifically derived cannabinoid products. So what I'm going to do, I'm going to give the chair to Commissioner Helen Colton so she could give us an overview and the community could be informed of what's going on with this topic that we presented today.
Well, thank you very much, Counselor Perez and Counselor Clint Bruce, Counselor Devila. Thank you for being on the call. Tim's phone, would that be Tim Allen? See, Tim's phone over to the right, I just want to make sure.
Can we make sure, can you identify yourself, please?
I'm trying to. Yes, that's me, Tim Allen.
Thank you, Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Counselor Allen.
Thank you.
I want to start out by just saying thank you to the City Council for bringing this forward. I also want to thank profusely Counselor Maria Perez and Counselor Brown, who were at the press conference, who made a commitment to this issue, really being very concerned about our youth. It makes a difference. And so thank you, Counselor Perez, for carrying this forward. Very, very much appreciated. We are here to discuss an ordinance and the ordinance really is to really make sure we are protecting our children around synthetic cannabinoids. What are synthetic cannabinoids? They are cannabis hemp that has Delta Eight and Delta Nine added to it, which gives it the effects of that high. And so it's important that we recognize that this packaging does not have concrete information on it. We do not know what is being sold as far as cannabinoids are concerned. We also know the clinical risks, which are neurological. These products can cause agitation, confusion, seizures, and stroke. There are psychological effects, including hallucinations, psychosis, violent behavior, suicidal thoughts. There are physical ramifications for these products. Rapid heartbeat, high blood pressure, severe nausea, chest pain, kidney failure, and potentially death. And so when you think about those potential side effects, the other thing I would say is I call these gateway drugs. We talk about our youth getting access to these and potentially having this high. And what might happen is they seek another high or want another product to get higher. And so these products are illegal. I think that's where I need to start. They're illegal and need to be taken off of the streets. And the loophole that has been created by the CCC, the Cannabis Commission, as well as DPH, as well as EMDAR, which is the agricultural arm. And so there's a gap here. The city of Springfield will be the first city in the Commonwealth to take this up and have it be an ordinance. You have probably read in the newspaper that the state has now taken it up as an issue. I think all recognize that these products should not be on the shelves of our convenience stores, bodegas, and there are organizations who are out there whose primary business it is to produce these products and sell them. And so that is a very quick overview. I have a PowerPoint here that we did to present additional facts. Happy to put them in your box if you'd like to see it. So it is important that we move in the direction, and I thank you for taking the first step. Look forward to this becoming something that is a part of the city's ability to enforce.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, if I may. The Springfield Law Department has been working with Commissioner Colton Harris on this matter for the last three months. And I would behoove every counselor to take a look at the information submitted by Commissioner Colton Harris. She provided us that information and it was eye-opening for us about the severity of the issue and the seriousness of the issue. And so we began starting to draft an ordinance to address the issue. From then till now, I'm sure many of the counselors are aware that the state legislature, the House of Representatives has passed legislation in regards to cannabis that touches on this issue, that bans these substances as well. That law does a tremendous amount, including changing the Cannabis Control Commission's authority, and also allowing local boards of health to enforce the state law. But there still is a question of whether or not this matter is going to pass because it not only requires the House of Representatives, requires the State Senate to pass it and the signing by the governor. We don't know what the end result is going to be. And so with that question, we recommend forging ahead based upon the seriousness of the issue. And so when we have addressed the ordinance, we wanted to tackle what the scope of the ordinance was and then what the enforcement should be. And so the scope again is to prohibit the sale of any synthetically derived products, Delta Eight, Delta Ten, THC. THC is tetrahydrocannabinol. That's the formal name known as THC. Delta Eight and Delta Ten are naturally found in cannabis products, but at a very small amount that would not give anybody a psychological high, per se, for lack of a better term. Delta Nine is what does that. But what the chemists have figured out is they can jack up the amount of Delta Eight, Delta Ten into these products to give somebody a high. And what is the danger of all this? These products are not banned, they're not prohibited, they are not regulated. They are simply on the shelves and anything can be inside these products. In fact, some of the marketing products you'll see is that it says 100% magic on the products, the bag, the product marketing. So we found that quite disturbing, that it is a whole unregulated market. We're hearing about a lot of storefronts selling these products in the city. We see that some of these, I'm not going to disclose this, but we're aware of locations in and around school areas that are selling these products. And we're hearing that there are students that are going into these stores to buy these products. And so why do we need to step into the void? As Commissioner Colton Harris has mentioned, the Cannabis Control Commission has said that they do not have jurisdiction because it is not within their scope of legislative authorities when the legislation was passed to create the Cannabis Control Commission. The Department of Public Health says it's not a banned product or a regulated product, therefore it's not within our jurisdiction. The Department of Ag says it's not within our jurisdiction because we only regulate hemp and that is it. And we don't really, we don't regulate any recreational products. So we tried every which way and we haven't, we do not have a state partner in this. And so therefore, we've stepped into this. The recommendation on this is for any product is simply just as if it is an alcohol, excuse me, like a tobacco product. If you recall, the issue that we dealt with was flavored tobacco. It makes it outright banned to sell flavored tobacco. And it also allows the public health to walk into a store and if they see an example, say Newport cigarettes, they can confiscate them immediately and charge based upon that, the packaging of the product. We want to do the same thing here. These products are being packaged right next to Doritos, potato chips, and the like. Oftentimes, always described with having some type of fruity connection and attractive marketing that lures in the youth especially. So there's bubble gum style flavors, there's pineapple flavors, grape flavors, you name it. What this ordinance would do would be allow the Police Department and our Public Health Department to go into a store and if they see such products that are described as synthetically derived cannabis, to immediately remove those from the shelves. Each and every package would be each a separate and distinct fine of $300. And we would take those products and store them. I do have Captain Dunne on here along with Lieutenant Bruno. I've been working with both of those gentlemen about a process to get their assistance to, whenever they're needed, to go to a store. We are continuing to work on how we're going to store some of these products because there are stores out there that we know that have a lot of product in their stores. And so we are working here out where the location of storage would be because the Police Department doesn't have the capability of that. But again, Mr. Chairman, the goal here is to take these products off the shelves as quickly as possible, issue a fine for each and every one. However, what we are talking about, and I'd like to pass it back to the Commissioner if I could, that we want to send out a notification to all the businesses beforehand so that if there is a question mark or confusion about what they're doing, we want to give them clear notice about it beforehand so that nobody can be surprised or act confused should be going to their store and confiscate the products.
And so for enforcement, we are seeing this in two, almost two separate entities. One is those entities who use synthetic cannabinoids as a main source of revenue. And so we will send outreach letters once this is passed requesting a meeting or a discussion. We'd like these stores to self-regulate before we have to go into them to confiscate product, if that's at all possible. We'd like to have informational meetings. So those are the areas where their main source of revenue are these cannabinoids. And then there is a second category, which is supplemental revenue source. These are the convenience stores, the bodegas, and other places that may be selling these products. Right now, we have identified 12 to 13 places where we know they're being sold. And so we will also do outreach to those retailers about the new ordinance and the associated fines. We will also make sure that our other divisions within the Department of Health and Human Services, such as tobacco, are in and out of these stores. Environmental health is in and out of these stores because we permit some of them. Also, potentially Springfield Fire Department or reports from our residents. We have a compliance officer who will be going into these places. He's already doing that. That's his job now, but he will be more intentional at this point. I'm sorry, his job now is with the legal entities that he is working with. And then we will continue to spot check retailers. I anticipate when this ordinance is passed, that we're sending letters to the list of over 400 entities that we have, just to inform them that this ordinance has been passed. Not all of them are selling these products, but we want to make sure we are being intentional about our outreach and updated information.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Attorney. A quick question. Just from my, I know we talked about it last Monday. And I know it's in there now, $300 for the fine. Now, potentially, does that go up? Say, for instance, somebody gets caught, first fine, $300. Do we keep fineing $300 or does that go up? And are we set on $300 as the set up? All right, so I know we talked about this having some teeth to the game. I think the words that we kind of used last, our last meeting, teeth in the game, so $300 is.
So the violation for, again, selling flavored tobacco is 1,000, 3,000, 5,000?
1,000, 3,000, and 5,000, yes.
First, second, third, and the fence. We would love to be able to do this in this ordinance if we could, but we can't.
Gotcha.
So the $300 fine is the maximum amount that we're allowed to issue as a civil penalty, both through our charter and state law. And since there isn't a special state law created on these products, we can't defer. So the 1,000, 3,000, and 5,000 is because the state law has allowed us to level those fines?
Yeah.
So we have to fall back to a regular process. When there's a fine issued, the maximum amount is 300. That's why it is.
Clarification. And then I don't want to monopolize it. I'll open up to my other colleagues. But another question that came to my mind, Commissioner, you may or may not have this now, but do we know if it's in urban areas or, and you said notified like 12 to 13 at this time? Do we have an idea yet of where those are at?
We do, but I would just broadly say they are within the borders of the city of Springfield. And they're not just in one neighborhood. They are across the city of Springfield.
Okay.
I would also say for the $300 fine, think about it, if we confiscate 10 packages, that's $3,000. So that even though the $300 does not sound like a lot initially, based on the seizure and the amount, it could go up significantly.
I understand. Thank you for that clarification, Commissioner. Counselor, I just want to recognize Counselor Whitfield, also Counselor Walsh, and Counselor Devilla. Do you have your hand up?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Commissioner Colton and Solicitor Bonacanti for your presentation. But Steve, I wasn't exactly clear on the part of the state. I hear that you recommended that we move forward with this ordinance, but am I to understand that the state is doing something at the state level that may or may not pass?
You're the chair, if I may. Yes, Counselor. The major thrust of a cannabis bill that was passed through the House a few weeks ago was about redesigning the Cannabis Control Commission. There's been a lot of, I'm not here to judge, but a lot of reports about dysfunction at the Cannabis Control Commission. And so it would be wrestling the authority away as it's designed now and it would be giving the governor full authority for appointments to the Cannabis Control Commission. So a lot of it is about the Cannabis Control Commission structure. It's also about the operations out in the industry itself that they're trying to adjust to both competing markets outside the Commonwealth, but also really demands inside the market that they're trying to tweak. So it's kind of a relook at cannabis, the cannabis law overall. And in that would be a prohibition of synthetically derived products being sold in the marketplace. So they are trying, they're touching on something that's very similar to ours. Theirs gives more of a warning authority. We want to send out a letter and then be able to find somebody right away after we send that letter out. Their argument would be that the first offense or violation would be only a warning and we don't think that is severe enough, provided we send the notice out beforehand. And the other issue is that the House has done this, but the Senate has not. There's been a lot of reports being, a lot of reports in the media, the Senate is reforming the Cannabis Control Commission. So we don't know what the future of the bill is going to be.
Wait, Solicitor, if we move forward and we pass this by means of an ordinance, and then there is changes that may or may not affect our ordinance, then I'm sure we will have to go back and readjust accordingly? Or would that be automatically be superseded by the state?
I would anticipate us probably having to come back and make some slight adjustments to the ordinance whenever the state law is passed. We just don't know what's going to be then.
All right, so that I'm clear, what you guys are suggesting is that we should move forward, we should spearhead this for getting on the books now, start addressing this issue now. And the way you're talking seems to me the state is going to be maybe a couple of years before they get themselves together on this issue. But at least here locally, we get, hopefully, get a handle on this situation, correct?
Yes, it has to go to the Senate. And again, they haven't talked about a schedule. And then it will have to go to a conference committee because in all likelihood, there'll be differences between both the House version and the Senate version.
Correct.
So we think that the matter is so serious that we can't wait, and that's why we're forging ahead.
Absolutely. Mr. Chair, if I just may finish by saying that this is indeed a serious issue. As I've stated before, there is even potential health issues with this. And when you do consume some of these edibles, you are supposed to eat them and wait. Unfortunately, we live in a society that all we want is instant gratification. And so I no longer have seen issues with this particular cannabis synthoids. And it's an issue that we need to get a handle of. And my compliments to you guys for moving this forward and to Counselor Perez for bringing this to the table. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, this is Ken Shea. Not sure how to put the hand up so that you can recognize me, but if.
I saw your hand clap.
I'm sorry?
I saw the hand clap.
Oh, okay. All right. I just want to point out something else. When we initially passed the marijuana regulations for the licensed businesses in the city, those regulations that we put in place regulate the distribution of normal, let's say, normal marijuana. And that product is less powerful and less addictive than the item that we're speaking about here tonight. And not only that, but the stuff that is regulated right now can only be sold to people over the age of 21. The product that we're talking about here in this ordinance that we put together is really a product that is being aimed and marketed towards our most vulnerable population in the city, and that is the children. And so here we have a product that's more addictive, more powerful, totally unregulated, on the streets, aimed at that population. And the regular marijuana is only able to be sold to people over 21, mind you, in a highly regulated industry. And so I think it behooves us, and I think the city is on the right track to be the first city in the state, to put this regulation in place. And I think it's critical that it be done sooner rather than later. And if changes have to be made later, we'll make the changes. But let's make sure that some young person in the meantime doesn't suffer a major health problem because we tied this up in the bureaucracy.
Thank you, Attorney. I got you. Go to Vice Chair, Counselor Whitfield.
I agree with this ordinance. I just wanted to know about if the ordinance passes. I don't know if you already talked about this, what the implementation strategy would be to get these products off the shelves?
Yeah, we did talk about that, but I'll let Commissioner.
I think that, yes. And thank you, Counselor Whitfield, as always. We do have a plan. The first part of it is the outreach plan. That's outreach to these, what are two buckets for us? The main revenue source. There are entities out there whose main revenue source is these cannabinoids. And so we will be doing outreach, sending letters once the ordinance is passed, just informing those entities that the ordinance has passed. And we certainly will also meet with them if they'd like, however. And then the second source is those convenience stores, bodegas, and other places that are selling these products, along with other products as well. We'll be sending outreach letters to them and making sure that we are having our team internally from environmental health, as well as tobacco control, working with them as well. Xavier Williams, who is our Cannabis Control Coordinator, is already doing the inspections with the legal entities. He will now be moving over to these other unregulated retailers. And we will be working with Springfield Police Department. I don't know if that answers your question, but how soon can we get them off the shelves? We believe that we need to at least inform that the ordinance has passed. And then, once that's happened, then we can begin the work of getting them off of the shelves.
Okay, that sounds good. So I heard you say that some entities, are we talking about the legal marijuana dispensaries are also selling these products?
No, no. So the legal entities are Delta Nine. And we have an article to ensure that the safe possession and use of marijuana by persons, as was said, 21 and over, they have to be in order to go into the ones that we permit. And the Department of Health and Human Services does permit these entities, the legal cannabis. And the difference is they have, you got to be 21, possession limits, penalties. They get penalized for excessive amounts. They have cultivation limits. We regulate marijuana in vehicles. And the legal entities do regulate public consumption in terms of their sales. Very different than what we're talking about. As you know, Six Bricks was at our press conference along with Primus Cannabis in Mason Square. They were there. So we've been working with the legal entities to try to assure that we are continuing to communicate and they are extremely, or have been, those who I've met with have been extremely supportive. and they are extremely, or have been, those who have, I've met with, have been extremely supportive.
Okay, I understand. Okay, thank you. That sounds good.
Before we go to uh Mr. Howard, I wanna uh open up to uh Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I, it sounds like it's a good thing that uh Counselor Perez and Counselor Click Bruce has brought this to our attention. Um, I had a couple of questions. Is there in um is this the first or second step of the ordinance? Can it pass tonight?
Yes, the second step.
Yes, it's gonna pass tonight.
Yes.
Is there an age restriction in it? I know you said legal marijuana is twenty one. Is there any age discrimination or?
No.
The product is illegal.
Illegal. They shouldn't even be selling.
So where does it come from, this product?
Chemists.
Chem- chemists.
Chemists have figured out, uh, it was, so it's a lot of this is kind of like a hemp product that was used mostly for agricultural purposes. But then they figured out if you add certain chemical compounds to that, you can get it to such a high level. And now it creates a psychedelic effect. And when the state passed its cannabis law several years ago, nobody had this on their radar because there was, this was not evident anywhere in the country or the world at the time. But from then till now, they figured that out and it caused this.
Amazing. So how did this come to, was it your attention, Maria, or was it?
It was on this, the the evolution of this concern was that at one point, and I know some stores, and I'm not gonna say, um, we're having can the candies, and when you look at the, I I remember that I had said then, when you look at the candy and you look what is in the candy, it's a hundred percent magic. Um, so um, that's that's all what's included in the label. Um, and it's a concern as a former schools um committee member that our children are entering the store, if you could see, if you look at the comparison of the
I've got another one.
Of the the package of the candy is similar to the Skittles and all under candies. So they are put in some in some business, they are right there along with the candies. So even myself as a parent or grandparent, um, my child wants a candy. That's the candy I'm giving out that he selected, not knowing uh all this educational information.
So so people can could be buying this without knowing what they're buying.
Yes. The children themselves, uh, not even the adult, but the when it comes to the adult, they think that they're buying candy and they're not candy.
Uh, let me ask uh uh so Solicitor, if the um House and Senate don't vote on it this session, cause their session must be ending soon, what happens to the bill?
Uh, the session doesn't end till next July, so they're, they've just started a new session. But they'll take a recess in July and August. So the concern is that they might not address this till the fall. There doesn't seem to be as much urgency on the issue statewide as there is here, based on what we know. So that's the concern is that with these, they're, they seem to be moving slowly in the process.
And have been.
But they have until next July, in essence, to do it.
So let me uh just say, Counselor Walsh, that this came, this came before the Public Health Council in October. Um, and so the Public Health Ca- Council passed a regulation. Um, and so the regulation was, we can pass regulations as a public health council as long as there are no fines. If there are fines, we have got to go to the city council. And so we passed the regulation and then we met with members of the administration, including the mayor. And the mayor really was the one who said, this doesn't go far enough. Once we laid this out, um, he was very, uh, I think anyone who looks at the presentation and looks at um this. Um, Counselor Perez uh was very upfront and in kind of jumping in and saying, I need to support this. Um, and so, and we've had other counselors, uh, like Counselor Click Bruce, who, you know, you just the enormity of what this really means for our community and our children is really just um it saddens me really, just to think these products are in our stores.
Well, thank you for all your hard work. And I, I hope this passes tonight and you can send those letters. Can you email them or do you have to actually send?
I'm gonna send hard copies. I'm gonna send hard copies.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Uh, Mr. Stephen Howard.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. Uh. Before I ask my questions, I'd like to thank uh the gentleman for uh responding to my questions about this uh at the police commission meeting uh last week. And one of the things that he did say is one of the places that these uh, what do you call them? Can uh candy cannabis, whatever it is.
Oh, you got it.
Broke it down like I'll break it down to my two-year-old, my grandson. I'm ready.
That is also found in uh in gas stations. So now you're talking about probably interstate commerce going on here. Because when people pull up, you know, they come over the ninety-one, they gas up, they could go by, they go upstairs, they go downstairs, whatever. So it's a ju- just not a way to make this thing national. Uh, now just to share a brief story, back in the seventies, eighties, uh, some, a young girl that I knew came home with about three vials of crack. And we asked if she knew what it was. She said, yeah, everybody knows what it is, right? But she just brought it home for us to see what's going on in schools, right? And she says, well, what they do is they give it to you free. And by the time you get hooked on it, you you know where to go and get it. And hence the crack epidemic, which resulted in the spread of AIDS and all this kind of stuff, blah, 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 right? So now, seeing that they are targeting the children, my whole conspiracy theory, conspiracy theorist philosophy is, is this another way to start compromising our children? Because if we could get them hooked on these candies at such an a young age, and they're going to school, they're falling asleep, they're not paying attention, parents, whoever is buying it for them, not realizing what is going on. One thing I'd like to, uh, one of the first questions I'd like to ask is, what kind of public awareness um has uh, let's say, the SPD or law enforcement been engaged with to get this into uh this, the knowledge of about this into the community?
Not much yet. Uh, I think we we've started to uncover it the last several months. Curiousness of it, months. Um, and so, but it's been out there apparently for a little while, based on what we're hearing. Um, so we plan on ramping up the campaign, at least about the sale of the product. We don't have any marketing campaign to educate the rest of the community. I don't know if there's a plan for that either.
I have ideas. Believe me, I have ideas.
That's not my area.
But you know, uh, also the good news, uh, I'd like to work with you on this. I have, I I just have a couple more things to ask, because I haven't heard these questions raised. Uh, how can the community discreetly, of course, monitor these stores? And so that they could know what to look for when they go into these stores. So then they could discreetly report it confidentially to law enforcement.
Yeah. So we have, uh, again, we have text tips. We have, we have that uh tool as a mechanism to to report uh different things that are happening in our in our community. Um, so that would be one. We also have the police department on air to to uh, if they wanna speak upon a- anything else. But that would be the the ideal one, uh, right out, right out the top, and then obviously calling nine-one-one. Uh, but you said discreetly, so the text tip is uh is one, one mechanism.
And I would say, Mr. Howard, that we have uh members of our staff that are in and out of these facilities all of the time. Um, so that's why we know the thirteen places at this point. Uh, so our food inspectors are in the gas stations because they have uh packaged food. So they're, they're looking. Our environmental health individuals as well, who um do regulate um the uh food supply as far as restaurants concerned and other places. And then tobacco control. Our tobacco control officers are in and out of these stores all the time. So we expect that we will know, uh, or at least, and we, we rely heavily on the on the public for tobacco. We get calls all the time saying they're selling Lucy's. They're, you know, selling flavored tobacco. So the public has been very intentional about letting us know when they see something.
I have a question, Mr. Chair. Uh, let's say a child went in the store, they bought it. Could they then be uh held arrested, uh, put through the process because they are in possession of it? Because if it's, if it's something that is legal and they they have it, they you know, they may not understand the consequences that they face when they buy this, because they think they could get away with it. Uh, is there any kind of of legislation addressing, folks were twenty one and under, should they get be in possession of X amount of this substance?
Great question.
Uh, maybe law enforcement?
Yeah, that would be law enforcement, but that's a great question, actually.
I can answer, I could, I, I can try to address that for you. This is a civil ordinance, meaning that it's a civil infraction. It's not a, it's not a criminal law statute that prohibits the consumption. So the target is not the the consumers at all. We are not by any means looking to go after children who consume it. The ordinance is about selling um or displaying these items. So it's really on the seller of the product. Uh, because the product is not regulated, there is no criminal law that prohibits anybody from consuming it. Nor is there any law to prohibit the sale of it right now. So what we're trying to fill the void is prohibiting the sale of the product. That's what the focus of the ordinance is.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Howard, for your questions. Um. So co- Commissioner, we were at a C-three meeting earlier, I know Su Haili is on as well, over in Forest Park. Are you aware of anything, I, they call it gas station heroin, um, kratom? Are you, are you aware, aware of that?
Uh, we have heard of that. I am not aware of it um specifically. I got a call from a city counselor who 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 said to me, I heard that you've legalized um crack cocaine. So there are these out there. I'm not saying it's not happening, Counselor, but I do know that there are a lot of flying rumors out there at this point.
And I guess the reason why I bring it up, uh, cause I guess it's a thing that's happening as well. Would that be at some point, could we, if we pass this through tonight and then say this comes down the pipeline, the lines? Would this be kinda influx of this ordinance, or do we encompass it all with this one? You know what I mean? Say we get different variances of different things that come up, come about, how do, how are we, how are we gonna?
I wanted to, I wanted to find, I I did have something uh where uh, a city or town did have that particular product in their their uh regulation. It wasn't ordinance, it was a regulation.
Okay. All right, just something to think about, cause I was at the C-three meeting and that kinda came up. I was talking about this tonight. And that kinda came up and sparked my interest a little bit, so I just wanna bring it to our attention here as 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 a body.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Um, so if there's no further questions or comments, uh, we'll go in once, go in twice. Counselor Perez, I thank you, or Counselor Brown for bringing this forth. Do you have any final comments?
Well, I'm hoping that I will probably pass this. I'm just very concerned about the matter. Um, of children to walk in, pick up candy and just eating them. And not only that, we forgot the ones that are medication. Children that are medication and the reaction that this um irregulated um 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 can can have a no way to do to them. So thank you so much and for the counselors that attended today, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for attending. Uh, this meeting is adjourned at five seventeen P M. Thank you.